All the meeting to order, would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you all to our Board of Aldermen meeting for Monday, October 6th, 2025. First order of business, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda? I have two I would like to propose. One is a regular course of business on the front page of your agenda down toward the bottom. You will see under Reports and Letters, Police Chief Kilcullen, Executive Session. I would like to move that to the end of the meeting as we usually do. And a second one at the toward the end of your agenda under Reports of Representatives. We have one there from Alderman Gillum, Executive Session, Personnel Matters Regarding Rutland County Solid Waste District. Alderman Gillum has requested that we pull that, so we're not going to have that tonight. So if I could have a motion for those two changes.
So moved.
All righty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, thank you very, very much. All right, next up is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to approve our minutes. Anyone have any changes that they would like to make? Seeing none. Do you have something?
The addition of a spoke round by the bike.
Okay, yes. Well, let's get the minutes done. So a motion's been made to approve the minutes. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Why don't we do that toward the end of the meeting under new business? We'll take care of that. All righty, so, public comment. We are on to the public portion of the meeting tonight. So is there anyone present outside the rail from the public who would like to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda already? And if you would like, please raise your hand. This is an issue that's not on the agenda?
Yes.
And welcome once again.
Thank you. My name is Kim Lyon Pratt, and I'm from 97 North Street Extension here in Rutland, Vermont. And I'm here to just speak about unintended consequences. Rutland Main, Route 7, north. Sorry, I'm not a good public speaker.
You're doing very well.
Just put in a bike path, and to put the bike path in, we needed to take a lane of traffic out. And then in the center, there's a turn-in, turn-out lane. Well, the unintended consequence is that the traffic traveling from north to south, from Pittsford, Brandon, and I don't know where else, but backs up from the corner of 4 and 7, all the way back past Library Street, all the way back towards North Street Extension in the mornings. I don't know what it does in the evening, but in the mornings, that's what happens. And rather than people just being patient, because it does flow fairly quickly, rather than people being patient because they're late or whatever other reason, they cut through North Street Extension and then along Hillside at rather alarming speeds oftentimes. And I worry because my next-door neighbor, they're a young couple, and they've got three kids, all under the age of five. And that just end, we have three different deer crossings that go across that, and I would hate to see somebody hit a deer, number one, and then green off into somebody else's house and cause property damage. So because of those reasons, I would really like to see the city put a speed bump in, a couple signs on either end that say children or deer crossing. But it's right along those flats, and I'll have, I do need, there's a three-way stop on those flats. I can't remember the street's name that tees off with North Street Extension.
Yep.
Thank you. But they often bloat through that stop sign, and that's just not appropriate. So rather than request a police presence, which I know is not a good thing because they're stretched as it is, and who needs traffic duty, to put a speed bump in to get people to slow down.
Okay, so that's the request. Alderman Clifford.
Chairman, I'd like to refer this matter to the Traffic Committee.
Second.
Okay.
I live on that, actually, up in Hill Press Road, and I travel that area every day.
Yeah, there's a school on that road.
So I'm aware of the speed and also the deer crossing.
Yeah.
I think it's a good discussion to have.
Did you say to the Traffic Committee?
Yes.
Yeah, so the Traffic Committee meets once a month.
Okay.
Over at the police station, yeah. It's the third Friday of the month, is it?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock in the morning. And the public's welcome.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're more than welcome to go.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So the motion's been made to second, and it's been seconded to send to Traffic. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Very good. All righty, anyone else from the public who would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda tonight? Looks like we're all set, and if we are, we will move along. Communications from the mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right. So first up, and I can continue talking while we're doing this if that works for everybody. I'd like to ask the Board to make a motion to suspend the rules, and then a motion to circulate the ballot box to allow the Board to vote on the nomination of April Choffey as Recreation Superintendent.
Okay, so a motion to suspend the rules and take the issue up tonight, been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And a motion to circulate the ballot box.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, why don't we take two seconds, make sure everybody can find their yays or nays. We'll have Tracy come around, and I think you can go right ahead.
Great, thank you. Next on the list, I just wanted to talk quickly about something that is on, partially on your agenda this evening, but with the discussion of some upcoming protests and events in the area and some of our parks, we have found that there is a bit of a gap slash overlap in some of our procedures. So with the special event permit process, with the way that we ask for insurance, some of these things, they actually may conflict with First Amendment rights. So when we found this information out, we started researching it, we sent it to our legal team. Requiring insurance or requiring a permit may actually create a conflict with the Constitution. So we've got our legal team working on it, and I can certainly bring the finished policy change back to the Board, complete, or you can refer it to committee if you like, and we can discuss it before we finalize it. But I just wanted to update everybody on that in case you had heard any questions or concerns about that.
Well, what's your pleasure? Would you like to wait till he has something concrete to bring back?
I should have something by the next Board of Aldermen meeting.
Okay, why do we do that?
It's a pretty interesting topic, so the attorneys are digging into it. Awesome.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next up, Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, as you know, is a little short-staffed at the moment, so I am making the nomination I placed on your desk tonight, the nomination of Jared Blake. Jared is here with us this evening, and I know we're about to want to say a few words too, so.
Okay, that'll be fine. Move to table.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to table the nomination, and it's been seconded. Why don't we just go ahead and vote on that? We can, we can hear from you folks. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Board members. I'm joined tonight with Sue Starr Adams and Erin Hildebrand. We're all your Planning Commission members, and we are here as the Planning Commission of Rutland City. We come before you today to show our wholehearted support for the nomination and appointment of Jared Blake to the Planning Commission. Jared lives and works here in Rutland City. His expertise and knowledge will be invaluable addition to the commission and the work we are committed to. This appointment will grant the Planning Commission a quorum and enable us to proceed with our work, which has been delayed due to membership. Thank you for your consideration and your respect for the importance of a well-staffed commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did place Jared's resume on everybody's desk as well, and the contact information's on there if you have any questions to.
Okay. Would Jared like to speak to the, for the Board, or you all? We certainly don't want to put you on the spot, but that's what I do. Just welcome and, you know.
Hello, Jared Blake, 45 Evergreen. And I was approached for this opportunity, and I think it's a good way to give back to the city by joining this commission. And I'm a lawyer, do a lot of real estate transactions, so familiarity with zoning and what you're trying to do as, you know, as far as a city plan is something that, you know, I can understand, take on. Yeah, live in the city, work in the city. My kids are here, so I have a vested interest in what happens with the development of the city, okay?
Wonderful. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay. Good.
And I have the outcome of your vote on the nomination of April Choffey. Nine yes, zero no. April Choffey has been approved.
Very nice. Thank you very much. April would love to be with us tonight, but she did plan a family vacation well in advance of this, and she is off traveling with her daughter, which I'm sure some of us would love to be off traveling with her family, so.
So a big congratulations to April from all of us here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the board. Okay, so I just wanted to kind of touch on a couple of things. You know, every once in a while, I'll hear things out in the community, talking to constituents, and when there's a theme, I like to, like to bring it to the Board. So last winter, you know, when we had a bunch of tourists in town, we talked about how, you know, they were talking about how beautiful the city was, you know, I thought I'd bring it up. I heard probably six or seven times in the last two weeks, three weeks, that the reputation of Rutland has changed. Now, if you didn't know what our previous reputation was, at least in the community amongst Vermont, that may be, that may not sound good, but a lot, a lot of negativity has been focused on Rutland over many, many years throughout the state. And to have people coming from outside of town, from Burlington, from Montpelier, from Essex or Brattleboro, and say continuously, "We keep hearing amazing things about Rutland." I just wanted to put that out there and tell you all, we're doing a good job, and people are pretty proud of what's happening. And I think the TIF tomorrow and the vote that we're going to have is going to reflect, reflect the citizens' confidence in the city and where we're headed, so I just wanted to pass that along. And I wanted to thank the Board for the TIF process. This has been a long, challenging, thoughtful, complex, but necessary process for our community, and all of the effort that everybody has put in, all of the data, and the research, and the digging, and the thought, the questioning, and the, it's been instrumental in getting us here, and I just really wanted to give my thanks to your, for your time, your efforts, and your energy for getting us to this point, so thank you very much. Lastly, I've got a note here. I was, I got a message from Alderwoman Carrie Savage today. She sent me this message, I'll just read it to you. "I kindly ask that you inform the Board tonight of my resignation. I have greatly appreciated my time serving, and have truly enjoyed working with all the members of our Old City Board of Aldermen on the important initiatives we have accomplished and those that we have started, which are essential for Rutland's growth and prosperity. I will miss working with our city tremendously, but at this time, resigning is what I need to do for both personal and family reasons." So I just want to say thank you to Carrie for her service and pass that message along.
Okay, very good, and I will send along those same sentiments from the Chair here, and on behalf of the Board, we appreciate her service, and I'm sure we'll run across her in some venue, but we thank you very much.
Absolutely, and that is it for me this evening.
Okay. Anyone have anything for the Mayor while he's up there?
Oh, Larry.
Oh, yes, Oliver Kuply.
I think you spoke of it earlier. I did have a constituent who was complaining about rubbish pickup from a private company.
Yep.
Who was picking up rubbish at 5:00 a.m., waking up neighbors, trash. Certainly request that we send this to Charter and Ordinance.
Great. Second.
Okay, we're, the request is to refer the issue to Charter and Ordinance Committee. Any debate on that? We had a little discussion before the meeting tonight about what might be on the books and what might not be, but I think we can flush that out in committee.
Yeah, right now, there's a noise ordinance from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., I believe, for most of the city, so that would fall outside that range. But yeah, I would say that we currently don't have a chair for Charter and Ordinance now, so.
It's 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., I believe.
Yeah, well, we'll have it, hopefully, we'll have a chair.
No, we have a.
Hopefully, we'll have a chair pretty quick.
Okay.
So, all righty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you again.
Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you. All righty, moving on on the agenda, special event permit requests. We have, first up, No King's Day II, Saturday, October 18th, 2025, from 12:00 to 2:00, Main Street Park.
Let's suspend the rules.
It's a motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded.
Wait, can we hear from?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So a motion is to suspend the rules, take the issue up tonight, it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Now, Alderwoman, how do you, would you like to?
I just wanted to invite the applicant to come up to speak.
Well, he surely can. And hello there.
Dave Kopick, Rutland City.
Welcome.
I know the Mayor talked about this a little bit before, but the background is that my group that I'm associated with has been holding demonstrations on the sidewalk generally in Rutland City on a pretty regular basis since the presidential election. And on several occasions, we've asked the city about using Main Street Park, and we were told, well, you get the permit from the city clerk, and then you have to go to the Rec Department and to get proof of insurance. And, you know, groups like ours, we don't, we can't even get corporate status, and that's sort of a catch-22, because you need an EIN to get insurance, and you can't buy insurance unless you have corporate status. So it really makes it hard, and then it, so it occurred to me after this happened a couple of times, that seems like there's, we're being denied a right, a pretty essential right to free speech, because the New England tradition is that the parks are the commons. They are, people used to, you know, graze their sheep in the commons, and it is a public space, open to everybody to use, to express, express their First Amendment rights. And so I reached out to Anna, and, you know, it's, she's about the same way, and I thought I'd trust her lawyerly skills, and she pursued it to the acting city attorney. And they came back with a document that starts out pretty much saying, "The rights of free speech and assembly are highly protected in the U.S. Constitution," and go on to say things like, "Speech that occurs in a public forum," and that's likely what Main Street would be considered under the law, must, is protected. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's, it's paragraphs long, and it, and it goes into a pretty good defense of why that should be public space, not just for our group, but for all groups of all opinions. And so, and I understand that, you know, you, you may think that there's a, there should be a process where you have to go through and have committee meetings and so on and so forth, but my position would be that this is a constitutional right. It's being denied. It's, it's free speech, and we know already that that's being denied across the nation in many ways, and I just don't see us in Vermont being of that ilk. And I think that it would be a great thing if you would vote to give us a, you can even make it conditional on certain conditions or provisional, provisional, whatever, for October 18th to use the park. We don't need a lot of space, we just want to stand in the park and have a demonstration. We have a Speaker, Vermont Secretary of State, Sarah Copeland-Hanzus, has agreed to speak. And just asking that you give us that space for a short period to express our right to free speech.
Okay, very good. So Alderwoman, how do you?
I will make a motion to approve the No King's Day II special event permit for Main Street Park from noon until 2:00 p.m.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. All righty, so the motion's been made and seconded. Debate, Alderman would come.
I have more of a question than anything. Do we really even need to vote on this? Have we ever weighed in on a public assembly at all? Like, what, I'm sort of wondering, like, why this is on the agenda? Like, they have the right to go assemble, do their thing, and I'm worried, like, are we just going to set a precedent?
And Alderwoman, how do you?
So I think generally, people seek a special event permit if they want to have a city road closure or if they're involving city departments, and so that is a time to seek a special event permit. My understanding is that this group was trying to sort of provide a spec, like, a professional courtesy to the city to let us know there's going to be a large group of people assembling. And then when they sort of went through the process, then came up this issue about the insurance, which it does make sense to require somebody to have insurance if you're closing a city street or you're involving our city departments. That totally makes sense, but I think that that's where this all came up, and I think theoretically, no, we don't need to vote on this tonight, but I think that we should vote on it to just indicate that we are very supportive of people's right to free speech, especially given what is happening in our nation as the federal government continues to restrict our right to free speech. It is of the utmost, most importance that we locally support people's right to free speech and certainly not infringe upon their constitutional rights. So I think in this case, yes, we should just proceed and take a vote, but I think no, generally, people that are having a protest should not be coming to the city for a special event permit.
Okay, so Alderman, how do you, I saw your hand.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask the Mayor, because I thought events happening in the parks were the purview of this superintendent, so that would be April, and I think she's signed up on this already. I believe that's correct. Well, I don't, in other words, I'd say something to, you know, I, I think she has the jurisdiction on this and the ability to prove or deny.
Yeah, so the superintendent in the park does, but even in those cases, when it's going to involve multiple parties, police, fire, we've seen in the past that the Rec Department will sometimes ask for a special event permit. Again, as Anna said, it's kind of been a courtesy at this point, and I do think that in this policy, what you'll find is that we may not require one, but we may request one just so that we can have all the information, because in an event like this where, you know, a large amount of people may show up, we want to be prepared, at least on the back end, to know what's happening if not participating, so. And then Tyler wanted to.
Tyler, you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, just quick. So the Recreation Department, obviously, is open to everybody. It's, we have so many events that are going on now within our park, so it's just, it's helpful for us to know if someone could just say, hey, we're going to do this. We're not denying anybody anything, ever. I mean, we are encouraging, we want people to come out, do whatever you got to do, but if, like, this weekend, we got Art in the Park that's coming up, so we just don't want conflicting things that are happening, double booking locations and stuff like that. And if there's, like, power and stuff that's needed, right now, those amenities are under lock and key, because if we leave them open, people misuse them. So it's just also allowing us the ability to also provide you folks with the best options that you have, so we just know it's really what it is. So there's no denial to any of this stuff. It's just more of an FYI, so we can make sure we're doing our job to support.
Okay, thank you. Oliver Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to address this, looks like a concern on, on the, the bottom of the, of this application. This is from Recreation Superintendent, said it will help to address what plans do they have for 1,000 attendees in restrooms, as well as being fully aware of carry-in, carry-out. If approved, with note, without insurance, the city will be knowingly assuming the cost of any damages to the park. So I just was curious as to how we're going to address that.
And I think we can have the Mayor answer your question.
Up and down. So we have reached out to our insurance company. We are covered for things like this. We, in the event that it is a protest and it is not insurable, right, that's something that the city is covered for by insurance. Of course, if something did happen, it would probably affect our deductible, you know, our rates. However, that's the risk you take as a public entity, and that's the message that we've been, thank you. You're welcome.
So you're saying we are covered?
We are covered, yes.
Okay, yes, yeah, Alderwoman McLeod.
And just to address the concerns for carry-in, carry-out, some other members of the Board, no, I've been a sneaky, squeaky wheel about this. You can access trash cans for free use for events through the Rutland County Solid Waste District. You have to haul the trash to and from the transfer center yourself, but they can provide you with the cans at no cost, just to help mitigate any trash concerns.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Oliver Gillum.
I agree that we should have a permit so the department knows that there's something going on there, and they can share that with the police department, so they can have their eyes out there. We need to have them there to protect the public lands and the public who are there. I have no problem them having a demonstration there, and we're covered by insurance, but I do believe we should do the permit so everybody, all the department heads know that something's happening there. I think it's just a good communication tool.
Okay, very good, thank you. Yes, Oliver Kuply.
Am I wrong in saying that there's been, already they've had these groups up at the park?
On the sidewalk, yeah.
They've been there?
That's correct. I think what was stated was there's been some demonstrations on a weekly basis, if I'm not mistaken, on Friday evenings, along the sidewalk on, adjacent to the park.
Has there been any confrontation?
Not that I'm aware of.
Anyone's knowledge?
Not that I'm aware of.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Again, the motion is to approve. Alderman, how do you?
Yeah, I just want to, for the public's knowledge, the event description is a nonpartisan gathering in support of the American democracy. I don't see it necessarily as a demonstration.
Right.
Which has a little bit, a different connotation maybe.
Right.
Secondly, I'd say I will vote for this. I know Dave Kopick a long time, I have a great deal of respect for him, but I don't know if it's necessary that we vote tonight, but I will vote for it.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, again, the motion is to approve. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. Okay, very good, thank you very much. So we will move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Looks like Fire Chief Lovett has one, two, three entries here, and before you go any farther, I just want to say publicly, as I already have on Facebook, a big thank you to the department and Mike Barrett and company for a little issue I had at the House with a, kind of a raccoon.
Rocky raccoon.
Rocket raccoon at 4:00 in the morning, and they helped me out greatly, and my wife and I are greatly appreciated, so thank you very much.
You mentioned that. It's one of the more unusual calls, but we do do a lot of things people don't realize sometimes.
Well, that was unusual, but it was, it was appreciated, so go ahead. First up is AFG Grant.
Right, first, I'd like to recognize some guests we have here tonight.
You certainly may.
The troops, we have multiple troops here. The first one is BSA Troop 105. We have 110 and we have 120, so we're a conglomeration, basically, of some troops in the area.
Okay.
Get together on Monday night, and they're here tonight working on their communications merit badge, listening to public debates is part of the, the process, and reporting back out to the group later on is the end goal.
Okay, well, I hope we're putting a good foot forward to the, to the troops there. All righty.
All right, tonight I have something good to share with everybody is, recently, it seemed like the AFG Grants, which is American Fire Grant, seemed like they were stagnating, and we had made it past our third round of review, and it was locked in the Cabinet. About a week and a half ago, I got a notice that didn't seem exactly correct. It seemed a little strange, it wasn't a typical thing, but that we had an award waiting for us, so.
That's a good thing.
I figured it might be a trick to Bermuda, something like that, so I was a little skeptical, but I did do some investigation and found out that we had, in fact, actually received an award. So this award, you authorized me quite a long time ago to, to apply for. It's for $77,101.01, of which, within our line item for training, we have to provide $3,671 as our match. This grant will be used for training for firefighters, all the crews. We have a number of new individuals. We want to ramp up the training for them a little bit, and then we're going to be purchasing new fire hose. new fire hose. We've got about 100 pieces of fire hose that have now recently been outdated, and this will help us move forward into getting into a replacement policy. So it was more an informational thing, but thank you for your support early on. I know some of you weren't on the board at the time when we started this process, but it finally came through.
So can I ask you a question? You mentioned fire hose. I thought I read, I'm not sure if I read it in the Rollin Herald or not, but there was a fire at a residence, and somebody had run over a fire hose, and I know that was an issue prior to, and took a long time to litigate the recovery of the money. I don't even know if we ever did, but that happened again, is that true?
It did. We had a fire at the Genesis Nursing Home, and individual, despite the fact that my car was parked sideways and there was a police officer there, they got around and ran over the hose. So that hose is out of service, and that part has been built too. Unfortunately, it seems to be a pattern. Somewhere around 16 pieces of hose have been run over in the last five years.
Wow.
And it is against the law, it is a tipable offense, I'm working with the police department because replacement of the hose is a small part of it, when we have to wait a year for the replacement often.
Right, yeah. Well, I thought I'd bring that up, just to get the public aware that this is happening, and it's not a good thing.
Thank you.
And it's costly, as well as dangerous.
Very.
Yeah, so at the fire scene, so.
Well, definitely so, because if somebody's in on a fire and they're trying to make a push on it, we lose our water.
Yeah.
Put a lot of people in danger.
Okay, great, thanks.
Second of all, good news from the Homeland Security realm. The hazard, local hazard mitigation plan that we submitted, actually, the planning commission submitted on behalf of the city, went forward for review. Came back with some minor modifications that you've seen in your package, and those were provided by Maggie. So that plan needs to be resubmitted, but feeling that because it is a little different than what you had seen in the past, I wanted you to, you know, authorize us to resubmit it on behalf of the city. One thing to mention about that is because of the quality of the plan that was submitted and some actions that have been done from different department heads and partners around the city, we got notification that we have been increased in our allotment of funds if we were to have a disaster. And what that means is typically if we have a disaster, 75% of the costs can be, or the chargeable costs can be reimbursed by the federal government. Of the remaining part of that, the state would give us 7.5%. But because of this plan and other things like flood insurance, the Vtrans, bridge and road standards that we worked with the DPW with, the annual submission of the LEMP that UC Every Spring, and the completion of this document, we've been awarded 12.5% match from the state of Vermont. So substantial increase in the amount of money we could get. God willing, we don't have another disaster, but it will put us in better light in the future.
Okay, so you're looking for a resubmital of the local hazard mitigation plan?
Yes.
Okay, so motion to suspend rules.
Second.
All righty. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And a motion to authorize the resubmital of the local hazard mitigation plan.
So moved.
Second.
All righty. Motion's been made and seconded. Alden Woodcomb.
With the required revisions.
With the required revisions. We will add that to the motion, thank you.
And Ed just pointed out to me, I did the math error, it's actually 17.5% match now.
That's even better.
Even better. Getting better.
Anybody have any questions, any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and finally.
And the last thing is, we have, for a long time, had a relationship with the state of Vermont, provides airport fire protection at the airport. They fund it, and it gives members of our department a great opportunity to get some unique training. Part of the contract, it renews on a cycle. The finished document is not quite finished. It's circulating through Montpelier, and because of that, it currently is just lapsed. And so I'm asking tonight for approval to sign a interim agreement, was in your package, to extend this until the anticipated completion of the final document.
Okay. Alden Woodcomb, Tadio.
Motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Now, those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, go ahead.
And motion to authorize the fire chief to sign the one-year extension for airport rescue and firefighting services at the Southern Vermont Regional Airport.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Debate on that? Alden Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Chief, it says on line two in this agreement, it was increased by 36,000. I just was curious as to why.
Basically because the original document had been dated for quite some time, so because of that, they thought inflation should be counted into it, so they bumped it up. It's a short-term thing, just to make sure we didn't run out of money.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing no further debate, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you. And thank you all for coming. Good luck. Why don't we stand down for two seconds, let everyone leave?
Oh my gosh, he got, he was in the room, oh!
He was in the house.
Upstairs in the back bedroom.
So he got in through your doggy door and went up?
I think we're all, we got the room cleared. Let's come back to order, thank you very much.
Yeah.
So we still got a few things on the agenda here. Next up, and John, you're right up there at the podium, thank you very much, welcome, and floor is yours.
Yeah, should be fairly quick. Speaking of grants, so this was kinda handed to me or brought to my attention last week. We had to make a decision to basically give grant money back or not, and I'm always going to shy on the side of not giving it back. So we coordinated with RPC, and that's what the resolution in front of you is for, to support Stephanie Bork to be our MPM, Municipal Project Manager, for the scoping study, and that's pretty much, pretty much it.
Okay, so.
Motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All righty, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And motion to authorize the board president to sign the resolutions supporting Stephanie Bork to serve as the municipal project manager for the Rutland School District Travel and Traffic Control Plan.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion, and it's been seconded. Anyone have any questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, moving right along. Chief Kilcon.
Hi, thank you for allowing me this time to address you on this matter. Remember a few weeks ago, at one particular meeting, we did talk about this briefly, and I did mention the interest Sergeant Chris Rose, who's here tonight, like this, has expressed to pursue his education in organizational leadership. And as I mentioned, this is precisely the, you know, the type of employee that I would encourage to do that, and I think it's a prudent expenditure on the city's part. Chris has, you know, expressed interest in future promotions with the department, and going through this program would benefit not only himself personally, but benefit the department in terms of increasing, learning at the number of sort of principles that will increase the efficiency of the department and increase his skill, enhance his skills as a leader within the department. And so, you know, as I mentioned then, as I mentioned in the memo, you know, Chris isn't currently covered by a collective bargaining agreement. But again, it's, you know, it is precisely, as I said, the expense that I would look, that I approve, that I support, and ask for your support to do the same. As I said, there's nothing, there's no agreement currently in place. The matter was really referred to, I think, HR Committee at this point and Public Safety to discuss this further. But sort of time is of the essence with this. And the program started actually last month, Chris will finish sort of the first term soon. Essentially, they're about, per semester, they're about two kind of half semesters. And so currently, he's participating in six credit hours, you know, at least to the per credit hour cost. But we're looking for the, you know, again, assistance to what our union members have with the same sort of restrictions, upon proof of successful completion of the course, that's when, that's when I'm looking to provide reimbursement.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Yes, Alden Woodcomb.
Motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion suspend and take it up tonight. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, go ahead.
And I move, let me make sure I have the language just right here. I move to support Sergeant Rose as he pursues his MBA in organizational leadership, following the same requirements as a union officer. I don't know if you have better language you would want to use in that sense, Chief?
As a member covered under the collective bargaining.
Member covered.
Collective bargaining agreement.
Perfect, thank you. So that is the motion that I move to support.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll have some debate on that. Anybody inside the rail? Okay, one at a time, yep. Alden Gillum.
Should there be a dollar amount in that?
Well, I was gonna get to that. Yeah, there probably should be. So I see totaling approximately $24,624, but you're talking about 50% of that?
$12,312.
Right, those are, those are the, based on the current per-credit cost.
Right.
For 36 credit program.
Right.
So again, the, it's hard to sort of quantify what it'll end up coming to, but based on today's dollars, as I said, 684 per credit for 36 credit hours.
Alden Gillum.
Should, should it state 50% of the number instead of a dollar amount?
Yeah.
Right. That should be, okay.
Alden McClure.
I can amend my motion to have that be, to assist with 50% of the cost associated with a 36 credit hour of coursework. I'm hesitant to put a number, like an exact number on that, for the reasons Chief just stated, because it can be so flexible.
Okay, it makes some sense. Alden Woodcomb.
The language in the chief's request would be that the city would provide financial assistance in the amount of 50% of tuition costs upon successful completion of the required coursework. I think just that can be the motion.
Yep.
Okay. I amend my motion to the language presented there.
Okay, we'll get, before we take the vote, we'll make sure we got the right language. But we know what we're debating here, okay. Yes, Mary.
One of the things that I've been working on is fringe benefits. So this falls right into what I've been working on, and really, tax compliance. Are we in compliance? There are several fringe benefits in the documents, in the CBA agreements. SKITAS is gym memberships, even use of the Georgia, the rec facilities by, in one of the bargaining agreements, and educational assistance program. So I am really trying to get a handle on how these work and how are we in compliance with tax law as we do these. We have done, we have had educational assistance before and approved through the board. They have always been done with a contract, a written agreement between the city and the employee. So I'm all about the process tonight. It's not about the person, it's not about the request. But let's follow a really solid process here and document this arrangement, because we have another one that will, that has already been discussed. So I would ask that the board at least follow through, get this documented. You have to know the expectations of the city and the expectations of the employee, and document that arrangement, that, that is what I would add there. And I'll let you know more on the tax as I get, as I follow through on these things. Okay?
Okay. Alden Davis, go ahead.
Just a question, do we have such contract? Do we have such?
We have had a couple in a different department.
Yeah.
Where we had a written agreement between the city, and even in the bargaining agreement, and I know this employee is not in the bargaining agreement, the employee shall enter into a contract with the city mutually acceptable to the parties prior to undertaking any of the educational courses as set out above in the contract. So even in those rules, it just makes sense.
Yeah.
You all set there?
Yeah, I am, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So I can just add, I'll just add another amendment to this motion then, and I will just add an amendment that pending the signature of the contract as provided by the city treasurer, it sounds like you guys have something like this already existing within City Hall, so it sounds like it's something pretty easy to workshop within Human Resources and do internally? Does it need to come back to us?
Yeah, I don't want this, I, I'm raising this issue, but I don't want this. I have too much on my plate to be doing educational assistance program contracts. But I would think that as a board, you would want to review the contract. But that is.
Okay, we got a couple people inside here, thank you. Yeah, Alden Woodcomb.
A couple things, it does probably make sense to have some form of contract or agreement in place as we go forward with this. I mean, it's not uncommon that businesses, institutions do tuition reimbursement, but there tends to be some form of contingent upon. So one question I do have is, when does the program start officially, or has it started already? And then I'll have a second sort of unrelated question about some of the other fringe benefits in Mary, like how are they classified? Are they classified as gifts? Have they hit the IRS reportable threshold? Like, it feels like there's two issues here, one about tuition reimbursement, and then one about potential fringe not being categorized correctly.
And that's what I'm working on. I have reached out to our auditors to, a tax accountant to really, we've identified them in our office, we, we think we know how to report them properly, but we need to really go through it with someone to make sure that we're, we, we, are we correct that they're fringe benefits? There, it's a whole different area for us, so just want to make sure that we get it right. But, so I've been doing some reading on this and looking into what we've done in the past, so.
Okay, so Alden Woodcomb McClure, and then Alden Woodcomb Tadio.
I was just going to say, it feels like we're getting a little far from the discussion at hand, which is the tuition reimbursement and the motion that sits on the floor with that. I don't disagree that we need to talk about fringe benefits. Maybe after we make this vote, that's something that can get referred for further discussion to finance, and then the creation of this contract within Human Resources can be something that we refer to Human Resources. But I just look to Chief, when you say this is time-sensitive, I know that the semester has already started. Our approval is needed tonight to ensure that this is squared away, ready to go, and could we, and I, I don't know who I would look to, as we lack a parliamentarian at the moment, but what the process would be if we could award this contingent on this document that we have yet to create.
So, you know, again, as I said, the program started before the city, the city wouldn't provide, assuming this gets approved, the city wouldn't even, wouldn't provide the reimbursement until the current courses were successfully completed. But as far as the agreement, so if you remember, a few months ago, I came to the board for another employee who's seeking an MSW, and following that, so the approvals pursuant to the contract were in place, following that, the HR director had sent out an email to the entire board and stating that the city doesn't have a policy on it and it's not supported by the CBA. It is in fact supported by the CBA. I, I have no reason to, not to believe that the city doesn't have a policy, but it is supported by the, by the CBA. The other part of that email had to do with the tax implications. And I responded, and I referenced Publication 15 of the IRS, which, which talks about the fringe benefits employers must have to tax their employees for. One of the things is called a working condition benefit. And, and the contract language sort of contemplates what a working condition benefit is in terms of the benefit, it has to benefit both the department and the employee, and talks specifically about education, educational assistance. It talks about if a program, the, the. It talks about, um, if a program, it, the, the entire program might not be tax-free, the assistance that's provided for it. But, uh, for example, if you've got a thirty-six, um, credit program and you've got six, uh, credits of electives and one is a swimming class, well, that's not going to benefit the employee in, in a job like this. So that, that would likely be taxed. Okay. But again, Publication Fifteen talks about it. Um, and I mentioned in that email too, remember, this was a couple of months ago and you all got it. Um, I mentioned that the, whatever tax implications there might be will likely be spelled out in the agreement that Mary referenced. And so following that, um, the approval for the board, that was one of the matters I referred through Desiree and, uh, and, uh, HR and the legal office to have an attorney draft that agreement. And that, that agreement was drafted and, and, and that's all spelled out. So the agreement that Mary referenced is, is done. Um, and that was signed a couple of weeks ago. And we would go through the same process for this.
Okay. Alderman Tati.
I just want to clean up the language of the motion, if you will allow me to make a suggestion. And my suggestion, I'm happy to email this to the city board, um, would just be a motion to approve financial assistance for Sergeant Rose to pursue a master of business administration degree in organizational leadership in the amount of fifty percent of tuition costs upon successful completion of the required coursework.
Okay. All righty.
I'm very amenable to that.
Make or the motion okay with that?
All good. Yes, please.
All good. Okay, okay. We've got Alderman Clifford and then Alderman Tati. Well, thank you. Uh, Alderman Tati.
If I remember correctly, and maybe I don't, so I'm going to ask the Chief, uh, that this is a line item in his budget that has, uh, been, that has funding for this purpose? Question mark.
So we have a, a training line in this, you know, although this particular expense wasn't budgeted specifically, because the Chris, you know, again, the budget process started a year ago and the questions came through in the last month.
Right.
Um, so that's particular, item wasn't specifically budget, but we do have a training, a training line that we would, we would pay.
That's what we've discussed.
Right.
Uh, we haven't discussed it actually, but, um.
My, I knew it somehow.
Well, again, the question may have been asked for the previous employee.
Oh.
Not for this particular employee.
Got it. Yep. Okay. I recall. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else? Does everyone understand exactly what the motion is? And thank you for putting it together. I can't repeat it because it was a long one, but, uh, does everybody understand the motion? Okay. Any further debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Very much.
And Alderwoman Davis.
I think, uh, and the Chair agreed, um, as you recall, we refer to Public Safety, um, having discussions about, um, positions of leadership, not joining the unions, uh, whether it was police or fire. Um, and I think this is a topic that needs to go to Public Safety with it, because as we stated, uh, the agreement is with the collective bargaining unit, not with, at the sergeant level. So I think these are things that we have to discuss. So going forward, folks in those positions know exactly what their benefits could be. So I'll refer, I'll refer the educational piece to Public Safety.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to refer. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Okay. So he also had an executive session we'll do at the end of the meeting. So we will move on to reports of standing committees. Alderman Whitcomb, looks like you're up next.
All right. The Finance Committee met on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. We had four agenda items. They were the purchasing policy, the review of the June thirtieth financials, legal service, RFP review, and the one oh seven West Street lease, the parking lot option to purchase. Committee members present were Alderman Kupley, Davis, McClure, Savage, and myself. Others present were President Alair, Alderman Talbot, Mayor Dungeons, Treasurer Markowski, Tyler Dolan, Bob Poravansky, Gordon Droschillo, Desiree Stone, Feliciano, maybe? Sounds close. Good.
Yeah.
All right. The meeting began at six PM with Treasurer Markowski leading review of the June thirtieth financials. Treasurer Markowski highlighted a significant overage and overtime, noting that recent hires are expected to reduce the spending. In contrast, employee benefits came in under budget. Treasurer Markowski also reported that purchasing costs have increased across the board and a significant portion of delinquent taxes is owed by just ten individuals. Following the financial review, discussion turned to the Rutland City purchasing policy. The primary objectives of updating the policy are to account for rising costs and improve the efficiency of basic operational purchases for city departments. A motion was made by Alderman Davis to accept the new proposed language for the City of Rutland purchasing policy, which I will now read. Incidental purchases, employees who have been designated to act as purchasing agents may make purchases of up to seventy-five hundred dollars without prior approval, provided those purchases are limited to the amount of the budget authorized by the municipality. And purchases, all purchases over seventy-five hundred dollars would require prior approval of the Board of Finance. In addition, any purchase with a total value exceeding five thousand dollars shall be reported to the Board of Finance so that the board remains informed of larger expenditures. The Board of Finance shall review and all proposed procurements to avoid unnecessary duplicative purchases of equipment, supplies, and services. The Board of Finance shall also ensure that competition is not restricted with limits on the geographic location of vendors, with unreasonable requirements or qualifications placed on vendors or bidders, or by allowing vendors to be selected who have engaged in non-competitive pricing practices. The motion passed five to zero, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Is there any debate, uh, or questions for Alderman Whitcomb on his report? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
All right. Next, the committee addressed the one oh seven West Street lease, parking lot options to purchase. Mayor Dungeons may note that the parking fund has become self-sustaining and suggested to the committee that the funds from the sale may be best used to see an economic development fund. Mayor Dungeons provided the committee with a draft proposal for an economic development fund. See attached to the committee report. I apologize if it was not attached to the committee report, but I'll make sure to get that sent out. Um, Mayor Dungeons described to the committee examples of how such a fund could be used to spur development of properties that are otherwise undevelopable. Alderman Davis inquired the total amount, uh, from the sale of one oh seven West Street, which Mayor Dungeons shared was approximately a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. This item will remain in committee for further review. The final item the committee addressed was the RFP for legal services. Desiree led the committee through the RFP process, set engagement and details related to each of the legal firms that provided submissions. Uh, the attachment is not in this packet, but we were provided it at the committee level. And following the review of the law firms that submitted proposals, the committee discussed the importance of having an in-house city attorney. Alderman Davis then made a motion to enter negotiations with SP and F. The motion passed five to zero, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Anyone have any questions or debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
The meeting adjourned at six forty-four PM.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you very much. And next up is Alderman Gillum with Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
The committee, the committee met on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Committee members present was Alderman Gillum, Talbot, and Clifford, and Alderman Woman, Alderman Woman, Tati. Others present were members of the board were Davis and President Alair. Others present, uh, beyond the board was the city engineer, the commissioner, and Ed Bo from the planning, planning director. Also Gordon from the Rutland Herald. The meeting started at five thirty. The first issue was the sludge and septic fees. The Commissioner of Public Works reported a rise in the sludge and septic fees. Waste water treatment department contribute from increasing the transportation cost to the landfills in Vermont and in New York, in New York by Cosella. Current fees no longer cover these expenses. To address this, the proposal to increase the fund, the fee by two cents was suggested. The increase would aim to cover new transportation costs and potential fund for the future equipment that would need to convert the sludge into marketable products and reducing reliance on landfills. The fee was paid, the fees are paid by septic contractors from other towns and would be treated by the city wastewater department. See attached, I, I put a lot of attachments in there. I'm not going to read all those attachments, but it was all background information that you guys needed to make a decision. So, a motion by Alderman Talbot to move to the full board for approval to increase the wastewater treatment department's sludge and septic fees by two cents. Motion was agreed to, four, zero, and one. So, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any debate on that motion?
We have, we have the commissioner here if you have any questions. So, okay.
All righty. The increase is two cents. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Fire hydrant maintenance and inspection fees. Public Works Commission reported about a hundred private hydrants on the water system are not owned by the city. About thirty of those are owned by the town or other large concerns outside the city. The operation costs are rising. The maintenance flushing process are performed twice a year. The cost and pressure on the budget are increasing every year, and the cost to replace is much more expensive now. So fifty dollars per year does not cover the labor and vehicles. Therefore, the Commissioner suggests to raise the hydrant maintenance inspection fees to two hundred dollars per year. Alderman Tati moves to, moves a motion to the full board approval to raise the Public Works Water Department, two thousand twenty-five, hydrant, fire hydrant test fee to two hundred dollars per year per private hydrant, including outside of the city limits. The vote was four, zero, one. And I so moved.
Second.
Okay. So there's a motion and it's been seconded on the floor.
I need to add an amendment to this? Not this one, the other one needed the amendment. Okay. We'll get back to that. All right. Go ahead. Sorry.
So the motion is on the floor and it's been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Alderman, Alderman Talbot moves a motion to the full board for approval to raise the Public Works Water Department's, two thousand twenty-five, fire hydrant maintenance fee to two hundred dollars per year, private, per private hydrant, including outside of the city limits. The motion passed by four, zero, one, and I so moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. This is the maintenance of the hydrants. Yes, rather than the test. Okay.
There's two, 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 two things here.
Yeah. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to suspend the rules and bring up a time date that was not in my report for the septic and the, the other fee there.
Septic and sludge.
Thank you. Which was not added to the reports. That's why I'm suspending the rules to take that matter up tonight.
Okay. So there's a request to, to suspend and take the issue up tonight. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, the, uh, motion would to, uh, put the, uh, septic and sludge fees in, into, um, motion November first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Okay. November first, twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Thank you. Yeah, it's seconded. Yeah. All righty. Any debate on that?
We just didn't talk about a time when we were in the.
No, we did not. That's why I suspended the rules to take it up tonight.
Okay.
All righty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay?
This other one is the service line inventory, E, E, ESP and planning loan. Where this is the project that we're dealing with, um, lead pipes and things like that, lead water, the whole nine yards, the whole inventory type thing. I'm not going to read the whole four pages that are in here. I'm just going to deal with the motions. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I do have the engineer and the city commissioner here. Alderman Tati moves a motion for approval to the full board. Authorize the Public Works Commissioner to sign the MSK engineering, engineers, the engineering service agreement for phase two of the water service line inventory substantially in the form present pending review by the city legal counsel. Motion was agreed to on four, zero, one, and I so moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Anyone have any questions or debate on that one?
Everybody did their homework. Very good.
Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Go ahead.
Second amendment on the same project is Alderman Tati, or, uh, moves to, moves a motion for approval for the Board of Alderman to authorize the Public Works Commission to file the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund Planning Loan Amendment. The motion was agreed to, four, zero, one, and I so moved.
Second.
Okay. Once again, there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Anyone have anything on that? Looks like we're all set. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
And Alderman Tati also moved for approval of the Board of Alderman motion to authorize Robert and Ted to be authorized, authorized representatives of the City of Rutland for the water service line inventory, and I so moved.
Second.
Okay. And for the record, that is Robert Poravansky and Ted Gillen.
Last names. I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
The commissioner and the city engineer.
Very good. Thank you. Any debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
And among Senior Connor, CSO Storage Project Step Three, E, uh, ESA. Uh, Ted Gillen reported that the Monsignor Connor Park S, CSO Storage Project is expected to go out to bid next month on the Rutland largest, should be largest, not biggest, largest stormwater project in recent history. The project was slated for construction for next year. The first scope of the work is to oversee the bid process to make sure everyone held to the same standard. The million gallon storage tank and the associated infrastructure to aim to reduce the combination sewer overflows from the neighborhood and also the runoff from downtown, uh, on other projects to assist the downtown project. Um, this will also help for the backup. I'm not going to read the whole paragraph here, but this is also going to help the backup and store the water before it's treated. Uh, that way we have major storms. We haven't got things going into the creek. The project also has, um, included in these project is the Metal Street and Traverse Place and School Street is allowed, is being repaid, new curbs and sidewalks. The city has received seven million dollars of the Harper money. That's the American Rescue Plan Act funding for this project. The city engineer said that three million dollars allocated for the funding of the total project. So the total project is ten million dollars. This will be some disturbance next year with the Metal Street Playground. Uh, Public Works and Recreation Department is now working on plans to deal with that step by step. The project also has two-year phase. The first year, Monsignor Park will be under construction on twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six. And then the street renewal project, Traverse Place, Traverse Place, School, and Metal Street is two twenty, twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-seven. I want to make that very clear, because the neighbors are pretty wild about this. They want to make sure they've been told the right information, so the information is correct. It's a two-year phase. We're not going to get to their streets until two thousand twenty-seven. So, our motion here, Alderman Clifford moves a motion to approve, abide the Board of Alderman, to authorize the Public Works Commission to sign the amendment number three with Aldred and Elliot Engineering Service Agreement for Monsignor Connor Park CSO Storage Project, pending legal counsel. And that passed four, zero, one, and I so moved.
Second.
Okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded on CSO project. Any debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, the committee adjourned at six twenty-five.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Alderman Gillum. So, uh, we, um, pulled out the next item, so we're going to get right into petitions, letters, miss.
If I may?
Yes, you certainly may.
While we're still under standing committees.
Oh, yes, yes. You go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I met with, uh, with, uh, Recreation Superintendent Choffey last week. And she suggested, uh, that the Recreation Committee meet quarterly, um, just to go over any issues, to update the board. So I will be scheduling those meetings with the committee members going forward.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for reminding me. Okay. Now we can get into petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. Alderman Tati.
Yep. Um, report.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had Traffic Safety Committee. Yep. There you go.
Um, yeah, so the Traffic Safety Committee met, um, on September nineteenth, um, and it was led by Patrol Commander Whitehead. Uh, both our city engineer and our commissioner of Public Works were in attendance. And I just wanted to give the board the highlights since I'm your representative on that committee, and, uh, a lot of interesting things do transpire there, uh, including a conversation brought forward by a concerned citizen regarding, um, the intersection of Pier Point Avenue and Colombian Avenue, which is, uh, and State Street, I should say, which is in conversation, uh, at the committee level, and it remains there for the moment. Um, but a. the committee level, and it remains there for the moment. But a good, healthy conversation about improving that, potential opportunities to improve that safety at that kind of funky intersection that we're all well aware of. The other was by the city engineer Ted Gillum, the crosswalk evaluation guy that he created that was pretty impressive, I have to say, and you know, there's a lot more to it than I will expound on today, but just to say that a lot of thought has gone into it. It provides a lot of rhyme and reason as to, you know, kind of a guide forward for the committee to recommend these crosswalks in the future, and I really appreciate the effort that he created to create it and to give it to the committee as a guide so we can make our decisions based on something with facts and standards and so forth, which I thought was excellent. The one I just wanted to take a moment on was the first item that was on our agenda, brought forward to us by Charlie Oakman, who's a traffic safety guard for the schools, crossing guard as they're known. And Charlie brought forth the fact that one of our second most populated school blocks, if you will, is Rutland Middle School and Rutland Intermediate School, probably second only to the high school and Stafford Technical Center. And they're out there every day, and there is a notable amount of speeding on Grove Street. They're there very early in the morning, so I'm assuming that's the influx of people coming into the city, and then they're there, of course, later in the afternoon when people are actually maybe exiting the city. But either way, it's primarily Grove Street, some library avenue. And so a couple of things have been done already by the committee, which I applaud. One is we agreed to, for one thing, extend the time on the walk, crosswalk signals, because what was happening was the time's expiring, the kids are, you know, trying to get across the street, and this is, we're talking about thousands of crossings, you know. It's pretty significant when you think about it. And also, the fact that these cars are then out there in the middle of the street, and then they have to retreat back to the corner. So we also want to provide for their safety beyond the kids getting to the other side, as then the crossing guards getting back to their station, if you will, at the corner where the light and the button are that they press to create the walk signal. So we added time to the crosswalk signal, just a few seconds, but it made a significant difference already in that cycle. Additionally, Department of Public Works, thank you Bob, was already over there and repainted the stripes and the crosswalks at the intersection, which is, you know, it's a pretty big intersection, it's very wide. And then the third thing is that we're also looking at, just in that one section, the possibility of removing or lowering, I should say, the speed limit from 30 miles an hour down to 25, which is in the jurisdiction of the city, it can be enforced. So that that would be then potentially enforced going forward to, just to make it a much, much safer crossing for these children by the literal thousands. And so that might be the next step in the process of sort of three things that are being done to address this issue that they had. The other reason I wanted to mention it was I went down and met with both Charlie Oakman on the corner and Dan Daly. And I wanted to also mention that these guys are sort of emblematic of the crossing guards throughout the city that are providing public safety to these children by literally, if you think about it, hundreds of thousands over time. So Dan Daly's been doing this for three and a half years. Charlie Oakman's been doing this for 26 years. So in my book, these guys, you know, generic term, men and women who are acting as crossing guards for the City of Rutland are unsung heroes. I also was very appreciative that they knew a lot of the kids by name, they interacted with them, the kids knew them, they felt comfortable with them, and safety of these kids crossing these streets are their absolute paramount, is absolutely paramount, and it's their number one priority. But I do appreciate the quick action by the city. I know Commander Whitehead actually went up there right away after the meeting for several days to visually see what was occurring there so that we can make these changes to make it safer, and not only for the students themselves, but for the actual crossing guards who have to get back to their station before that light changes and everyone's off to the races again.
Yep.
So these are very interesting things that are going on in the Traffic Safety Committee. I appreciate you appointing me as the Board Representative. I enjoy participating in this, and when, you know, more notable things like this come up, I will be here to, you know, just let the board know some of the things that are transpiring at that level. No action necessary tonight, Mr. Chairman, just informational only.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tommy, thank you for that. Also, along those lines, I've received a couple of calls over the summer, not the summer, but when school has started from a crossing guard, from Randy McGuire, who also works the corner down at Crescent Street and Church. And he has mentioned the fact that there are, you know, some heavy traffic, some speeding going on along that route too, because they cross over from Beer King over there and across Church also. And I want to thank the chief for, you know, he dispatched the cart, the speed cart there that tells you that the speed limit signs, and I think that's going to happen again soon. So, I mean, as Randy, you know, sees things going on, I'm sure he's going to get back to me, and if anything further actions needed, I'll make sure that I refer to the committee. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, super. All right, thank you very much. Under reports of representatives, I didn't put anything in there, but just very quickly, as you are representative to the Transportation Alternatives Committee, the PACC, which is part of the Regional Planning Commission, I actually attended a meeting the other night on the 25th, and the gist of the meeting was talking about the upcoming grant programs, and they seem to be all hitting at about the same time. And I know that DPW and the folks in city government here are all aware of those, but I just wanted to highlight the fact that there are a number of road safety programs out there, Transportation Alternatives, which the city has been successful in acquiring funds, Better Roads, addressing stormwater, and better connections for highway safety. Those all seem to be centered around the October timeframe with deadlines coming up at the beginning of November or the middle of November. So if we're going to take advantage of any of those, and according to this information I got, there seems to be plenty of money floating around up there on those, maybe the city might want to apply for a couple of those. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that as we move forward. Okay, so now I can get to petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. There's none. Board of Control Commissioners, nothing. Cannabis, nothing. Unfinished business, nothing. Now, Chief, you had an issue that I didn't bring up under adding anything, but if you want to step up and just state what that is quickly.
Mr. President, are we going to do new business?
We're going to get to that.
We haven't got there yet.
Oh, we haven't got there yet.
I've got a new business.
We haven't got to that yet. I thought we were going to executive session.
We're going to do that after, at the very end.
Oh, thank you.
The chief and I talked about this, and he was going to remind me to get this on, to add to the agenda, and I didn't. So I will certainly, let's hear what he's got to say.
So, thank you. So for those who were on the board in April of 2023, you might remember, came to the board asking for permission to offer some benefits for recruitment and retention purposes, and those two things were ski passes to Killington and gym memberships to a local gym. That was approved on a trial basis. It's been a little, about two and a half years now. And I can honestly tell you, it's been, you know, really, as part of the, in terms of the morale that exists at the department now, it's really had an impact, and this is one of the big reasons why. And so, as I said, it's been on a trial basis, in discussions for, with the union over the past, you know, earlier this year before we ratified the contract, there was discussion about putting that into the contract on a permanent basis. We didn't want to do that because we don't necessarily agree that it has to be permanent, but it is something that does need to be temporary. And it was pointed out that the agreement we had in place with the area gym, it was a one-year term, and so we were looking to extend that for, and we're willing to do that for another six months. And so that's what we're looking to do, extend that for another six months. With the Killington ski passes, there's no agreement in place per se, but we're offered the pricing that's provided to Killington Chamber members. In terms of the relationship with Killington, we got, I passed out some of the material that we're using for recruitment purposes, and that's, Killington really wants to sort of use us more in some of the promotional materials. You know, we're really the only 24/7 agency in the county. This past weekend, there was a cleanup day at the mountain, and our officers, our recruitment team participated in that, and they really recognize that, you know, us as sort of being, as I said, the 24/7 agency in Rutland. And my sense was that, based on what they're saying, that they really sort of want to include Rutland in this, you know, this campaign to attract business to the mountain. And they really want to, you know, sort of bring Rutland along in that effort. And so, again, we're looking to extend this for, continue this onto the current MOU, which there's no expiration date. It clearly says it's on a trial basis, but we want to extend this for this year. As I said, we didn't want to include it in the contract to provide that, because then we'd have to negotiate it out if we ever wanted to change that.
So we're talking fiscal year?
So, the current fiscal year, yes, yes.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
My final question is, Chief or Mayor, do we know what the cost has been to budget to pay for these? And I'm just going to follow it up. If it's over that $7,000 limit, are we going to put it out to bid?
So the gym itself was 6,000. That's why we went to the Board of Finance, because we were looking to extend it, and it exceeded the $3,000 threshold. And so, the answer that we had gotten back from the gym, and they were looking to extend that through April, actually fell under the 3,000, but the Finance Committee suggested we come back to the board. And so again, what we're looking for is to extend this right now for, through March 31st until April 1st. The ski passes, it's a per-user cost, and we typically had about 12 to 15 members at the department who requested access to this. So with 12, if we had provided 12, it's about $800 a person, so that's about $9,600. 15 would be about, what, $12,000?
Yeah, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, Chief. We have our own facility. Why are we spending money at another one?
So, the, and again, this was a request, you know, that the union had brought forward to us. One of the other things that the gym was doing was sponsoring, including us and some of the sponsored events they had there in terms of clinics and things like that. One of the concerns was that the officers didn't have sort of, wanted some, to some degree, some anonymity when they're off duty, working with, you know, working out. And at the same time, though, this gym was offering, including us and some of the sponsored events that they had. So that was the presentation by the union then. You're right, it was offered prior to this, the gym membership at the rec was offered, and I think I used it more than anyone else, helping out with some of the basketball events, things like that. But that was...
So you weren't concerned about anonymity then?
No, I think it's pretty important to have that visibility.
I see. So the visibility wouldn't be there if the officers...
Yeah, but in terms of sort of the facility itself, this particular gym had sort of the equipment that, I would say, some of the more state-of-the-art equipment that provided sort of a better opportunity to engage in physical activity that members of the department were looking to engage in.
Well, I guess my next question is to the mayor. Do you see any kind of conflict of interest here in your part?
So, I was the board president when this was being discussed between Dave and the chief at the time, and then I had just become mayor, and I pretty much stated that I recused myself from that conversation, and I'll continue to recuse myself from this conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, go ahead.
Seven thousand dollars?
So, again, through April, through March 31st would be about 29, almost $3,000 between now and April.
Okay, so we understand what the issue is. If you would like to take it up tonight, we need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion is to suspend the rules, take the issue up tonight. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Okay, so, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, two, three, four, five. There's eight people here. We need six to suspend the rules. So, all those in favor, could you please raise your hand? Two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we've got six yes, and so that's, the motion passes. Okay, so the motion, or the rules have been suspended. Now we need a motion to move ahead.
Oh, we voted on it. Yeah, we did. Okay.
What's your pleasure?
So the motion is to extend the Killington season pass and the fitness membership through March 31st.
For the current fiscal year.
For the current fiscal year. Fiscal year? Okay.
Motion is to extend, aye.
Right.
I got it. Yeah, all righty. Thank you. Yep, appreciate it. So the motion's been made and seconded. Any debate inside the rail?
So, this, if I may?
Well, when Tommy, I saw your hand first, so go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, Chief, is this in the budget again, or we approve?
In the current fiscal year, yes. We haven't prepared the budget for next fiscal year yet.
Right, yeah, and I'll be on the committee for that. Second question is, is there anything that would, because I'm in favor of gym membership, and I think it's a great incentive, and we need to incentivize recruiting officers. However, I would like to know if there's any way that this can be designed so that, because off the top of my head, I can think of four gyms in Rutland, that they would have their, not counting the cities, that they would have their choice. So I would be in favor of supporting the financial obligation, but I would like to see the officers have a choice of the gym of their choice, if you will. The gymnasium downtown, for instance, Planet Fitness, and then Anytime Fitness, or Vermont Sport Fitness.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm not sure who I saw next, but Alderman McClure.
Chief, do you have access to exactly how many active memberships there are through PD to VSF, and then do we potentially have data looking back to see how many active memberships there were for people using the city gym prior, just to see what the difference is in use case from one gym that they seem to have not wanted to go to as much to another one that you say seems to be more successful? I just don't know if we have any data points we can look back at, since this was a test period.
Well, it's somewhat anecdotal, but again, the conversation with the rec at the time was, very few people used the rec facility. And again, I think a lot of that had to do with the, sort of as I said, in this other gym, this sort of the state-of-the-art equipment that our members who were working out would typically use for their workouts.
Alson? Okay, Alderman Davis?
So I just want to say that I think this is an issue that the treasurer brought up as fringe benefits. And I think, my understanding when this was originally done, it wasn't, I guess you can label a fringe benefit, but it was, the purpose was for recruitment, to kind of encourage folks to look at us twice. So I think this is another discussion that will go to public safety, to have that bigger discussion of how we treat non-union as well, and union to make sure that we're doing the right thing and handling these additional benefits appropriately.
Great, thank you. Alderman, welcome.
Thank you, President O'Leary. I actually kind of want to echo Alderman Donahue's point. I've received pretty direct feedback from gym owners who absolutely are comfortable supporting this program as a way to recruit, retain officers, but feel relatively frustrated that they didn't, they weren't included in a bid process, they can't be competitive, and that essentially all the officers are funneled towards one gym. Now, that developed how it did, but I would like to see a transition of what Alderman Donahue was sort of suggesting, which is a willingness to reimburse gym memberships up to a certain point, sort of in line with, you know, what is appropriate fringe benefit, what, you know, isn't violating any kind of IRS tax implications. But I'm somewhat uncomfortable going forward with just one exclusive gym, knowing that I've had members of the community explicitly state their frustration with this.
Okay, thank you. Alderman McClure?
I am uncomfortable with this issue going strictly to public safety, just because it is an issue of recruitment and recruitment tools. I feel that it is a better fit to go into human resources, as most...